Okay, I'd like to once again call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order. The date is December 8th. It's at 1:30 and I'd like to ask the invocation be given by Commissioner Danenberg. And after that, the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag by Justin Robach. Please rise.
Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to meet today. We give thanks for safe travel and good health. Please protect our students, teachers, administrators, support staff. We also pray for our healthcare workers. We pray that COVID-19 will soon be a thing of the past. We pray for safety for all of our armed services, firefighters and first responders and our police officers. We ask you to give our hearts the ability to show love, kindness and respect during these contentious times. Help us to be slow to speak and quick to listen. We ask for your wisdom, guidance, patience as we discuss and vote on issues which affect the citizens of Ottawa County. Help us to make responsible decisions. Bless our meeting today in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentations, oh no, roll call.
Sir.
Roll call please.
Mr. Garcia.
Here.
Mr. Baumann.
Here.
There's Alistair.
Here.
Mr. Danenberg.
Here.
Mr. Mepelink.
Here.
Mr. Terpstra.
Here.
Mr. Holtlur.
President.
Young.
Here.
Mr. Kires.
Here.
Mr. Bergman.
Here.
And Mr. Fenske.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next thing is presentations of petitions and communications. Okay. Public comments. This is the first time this afternoon, we have an opportunity to give public comments. Audience who would like to approach the commission at this time, you can. We're going to limit our comments to time to three minutes. Please give us your name and address. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the commission at this time? If not, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak to the commission at this time?
No, Mr. Chair, not at this time.
All right. Okay, next thing is communication from county staff. Lisa, I believe we have a public health update from yourself and from Durrell. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you. I'm just going to start by making a few comments and then Durrell is going to jump in with a more comprehensive data report for all of you. First, I just want to mention, I'm sure all of you know this, but on December 7th, the MDHHS extended the past three-week epidemic order for an additional 12 days. There really aren't any substantive changes to the order. Mainly, they came out with clarifications on a few things that I think were confusing a lot of people throughout the state of Michigan. And so they provided some more technical detail in the report or in the current order. So it's kind of status quo again for the next two weeks. They did say that it was really important to extend this because we're really not quite sure what the outcome of the Thanksgiving holiday is yet. And Durrell will go much more into the detail on the data, but we're not seeing cases go up dramatically, but we're also not seeing them go down. We've plateaued a little bit and so we really need to see if there's a trend that is indicating a downward trend. Also, on December 4th, the CDC came out with new guidance on quarantine. This created some confusion for folks. I want to try to provide a little bit of clarification. What they did was they recommended that a quarantine period, which is right now 14-day period, could be reduced to 10 days or seven days. The seven day would be contingent on a negative test result within 48 hours of the seventh day or the release of quarantine on the seventh day. This change is basically because data is now showing that 90 to 99% of COVID infections occur within the first 10 days of exposure. And so there's that better confidence rate for reducing the quarantine period by those four days. Now, in consultation with MDHHS, I think all of us in the state of Michigan, health officers and MDHHS staff alike, feel more confident with the 10-day quarantine than going to the seven-day quarantine. And there's a few reasons for that. One in particular is most of our testing capacity is needed for people who are symptomatic. And so to be testing asymptomatic people at this point when we're kind of in this surge point in our COVID case situation is maybe not the best thing to do. Also, the reliability of the 1 to 10% feels a little bit safer if we stick with the 10 days, the 10-day quarantine. It more closely aligns with the isolation period, so we think it'll be a little bit clearer for people. Isolation will be 10 days, quarantine will be 10 days. There is, there's also just our data that we have to consider. We want to always monitor where we are, how widespread is COVID at this point. And we may open it up to the seven-day quarantine period as our numbers reduce. So if a person can or is eligible for the 10-day quarantine, there's still some provisions that have to take place. The person must not develop symptoms of COVID-19 during their daily symptom check, so they have to check their symptoms every day during that 10-day period. The daily symptom monitoring must be continued for a period of the full 14 days, so they can get out of quarantine at 10, but they have to monitor their symptoms for 14 days. After the existing quarantine of 10 days, those people who are in quarantine must strictly adhere to the other mitigation efforts of hand washing, face masking, distancing and not gathering in groups. Just in case they're in that, you know, 1 to 10% where they would get COVID in that 14-day period versus just the 10-day period. This does not apply to people who are living in congregate care settings or those who work with high-risk groups, like for example, in a long-term care facility or something like that. So on that note, I will turn it over to Durrell to provide our COVID data report.
Lisa, if I can ask a question?
Sure.
I understand the quarantine, if you've been in contact with someone who might have had COVID-19. What if I happen to be a person who I suspect I might have COVID-19, haven't been tested positive? I do portray some symptoms. At what point, if I happen to be of the mind that I'm not going to go get tested because it's not that severe, at what point is a person okay to go out in public or make contact?
Without a test, and Durrell may want to help me with this. Without a test, you should isolate for 10 days from the first day that you're experiencing symptoms. I believe if you get a test, they go back 48 hours, so 48 hours prior to your test date or your symptom onset. Is that correct, Durrell?
I think the question is more like, what do you do if you're around someone that has symptoms, but they don't have a positive test? Do you need to quarantine yourself?
Or are you talking about if you become symptomatic? How long?
Right, if I become ill and I think I might have it. So is it 10 days from when I think I might have experienced the first symptom? Or is it 10 days after the majority of the symptoms have gone away?
And Lisa, I can just add to that or reiterate that the 10-day clock starts the day that you first start to develop symptoms for isolation. So we count that as day zero, the first day that you have symptoms, and then the next day is day one, day two, et cetera. And then in order to be released from isolation, typically what we do is ask you or make sure that your symptoms have improved and that you haven't had a fever for a period of time. And then that's usually the criteria or sort of provisions for release.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Lisa. Durrell's report before we ask questions, okay? Durrell?
You bet. You guys ready?
Yep.
All right. I'm going to share my screen. And would one of you kindly just verbalize if you can see the PowerPoint presentation on my screen?
You see it.
Very good, okay. My name is Dr. Glassar. I am the Senior Epidemiologist with the Ottawa County Department of Public Health. And thank you, commissioners, it's a pleasure being with you. I'm just happy to share some updates about COVID-19 here in Ottawa County. So one of the first things I want to do is just talk about the overall metrics. So when our state partners get up in front of the camera and talk about what's going on in the state, they usually reference a couple of things. So the first thing I want to talk about is just the number of cases that we're seeing here in Ottawa County. So since things began in the middle of March, we've seen well over 15,000 cases. And we have seen the biggest run-up just in the last two months from October to November. And you can see it from the figure here, basically late October to November is just a precipitous incline. And we continue to see between 200 and 250 cases a day with a few days well over 300 cases. And when we look at these, it's helpful to try to get an idea of what the trends are going to be, and I'm going to kind of cover that next. But the main takeaway from this slide is that there's just this continued high volume of cases. And that translates into two things. One, it's tough for public health to keep up. We have developed a lot of systems and evolved in order to adapt to this volume, taking advantage of a lot of technology in order to keep up with folks. We've also partnered with our state partners for help with following up with cases. So it's a continued challenge just to try to keep up with some of our cases, but we are doing the best we can to stay on top of it. And the second thing is that when we have a high volume of cases, it translates into usually more hospitalizations and sadly, more deaths. And I'll get into that in a little bit. If we can prevent some of these cases, we can prevent hospitalizations and we can prevent deaths, which is why it's so important to continue to engage in the prevention measures that public health recommends. In addition to the number or the volume of cases, I also want to talk about case rates. If any of you are interested, you can visit the My Safe Start map, which has data on what's going on here in Ottawa County and as well as different places across the state. So the data on the page here is the rate, so it's the number of cases per some unit of population. It's a great way to compare Ottawa County to the state or Ottawa County to Kent County. And I chose this slide here because it's also a nice way to visualize how the data gets smoothed out over time. So I just want to point your attention to this black line here, which is the case rate over time. So in October and into early November, our case rates continue to just increase substantially and then kind of rolled over. And you can see that just eyeballing it, there seems to be an improving trend in the average case rate. And I also want to point out here on this slide that Thanksgiving was on the 26th right here, and we're about 12 days out from Thanksgiving. So when the governor and our MDHHS partners spoke yesterday, they were talking about how we're at a crossroads right now in the sense that things seem to have plateaued and we just don't know which way the trends are going to go. And you can even see that in Ottawa County's data. Again, just eyeballing it, it looks like we've flattened out right here. And since COVID-19 can incubate or cook for up to 14 days before you develop symptoms, we're still within that window where people who may have been exposed on Thanksgiving or the Friday after Thanksgiving or anywhere during that weekend may not have developed symptoms yet. So it gives us pause. We really want to make sure that we're making the right decisions for prevention moving forward. And we're hoping that if there are any trends or a bolus of cases that come after a Thanksgiving exposure, that we take that into account, you know, as we move forward. So in this blue box here is this sort of window where people could still be developing symptoms and that time period just isn't over yet. So I'm expecting that if there are Thanksgiving cases, they're going to start to manifest kind of now and into next week. And we should have more information in the week or two to come. And so we talked about the total volume of cases, the case rates. And the other thing that we often refer to is test positivity. So the proportion or percent of positive tests in Ottawa County, we tend to hover. We're at 16% as of this morning. And over the last few weeks, we've tended to hover right around 15%. And if we go back in time, you can see that that is substantially higher than where we were even in September. You know, to the tune of a five-fold increase from where we were in the summer at about 3% to about 15% now. And even though our case rates look like they are suggesting that they might be trending downward, our test positivity remains high. And that's just another indicator of sustained transmission and the need for continued availability of testing. And then one of the other things that we do is, once we've got these overarching metrics, is I kind of wanted to dive into a couple of institutions in our community. So schools have gotten a lot of attention lately just because the epidemic orders from MDHHS have guidance specifically for high schools and colleges about transitioning to remote learning. And some of those decisions, you know, they all get made based on data. And I just wanted to point out that here in Ottawa County, when we look at the positivity rate, so the percent of positive tests coming back for the general population, the last few weeks, it's been about 15%. When we dive into the data and look just at the school-aged residents who are being tested, so anyone between the ages of five and 17, we don't include 18-year-olds because many of those could be college-age kids, and that's kind of a different dynamic. So we're trying to focus on elementary, middle and high school students. When we look at that data, if you follow the red arrow and just see how it points to the deep purple line, you can see that school-aged residents still tend to have a positivity that's at about the same rate as the overall community and possibly even a little bit higher. And so our school-aged children, our school-aged residents don't necessarily have an epidemiological profile from a positivity perspective that's much different than the county. And so I think this is important data that supports being cautious when it comes to how we work in schools. And if we dive in a little bit more, we break it down not just by school age, but by elementary, middle school and high school. The age breakdowns are displayed here, but generally, and if you follow the red arrow here again, you can see that elementary-aged children, this blue line right here, hover around 14 to 15% over the last few weeks. Middle schoolers, somewhere in the high teens, 18 to 19%, and then high schoolers tend to be 20% or higher. So there's this sort of dose response. As you focus on an older and older age group, sort of the higher and higher the positivity gets. These are just general trends and there may be some fluctuations here in the near future. But the point overall is that some of this data suggests that transitioning high schools to a remote environment may be helpful for curbing transmission just because the data indicates right now that those populations may have a higher positivity rate. When we look at the volume of cases in schools, I just wanted to point out that if you look at the overall volume of our cases here in Ottawa County, looking at all of September, you can see that it makes kind of a general curve. So the light blue lines indicate those cases that are not school-affiliated. And you can see that the basic definition below that, generally, the overall Ottawa County population or volume of cases has gone up and kind of come down. And you can see that the dark blue lines, which refer to the school-affiliated cases, have gone up and gone down also in a correlated fashion. So we can see that the changes that we've seen in the last few weeks have impacted both populations, the school population and the general population. So I'm really pleased to see that the school population is unique, like they're seeing sustained elevated case counts and that they're mirroring the greater population. Moving away from schools and into hospital capacity, when we look at our inpatient beds, we have a little over 200 here in Ottawa County. Generally, over the last few weeks, we've hovered between 50 and 80% occupancy. And you can see there's kind of an undulation in the proportion of beds that are occupied. When we look at all of those beds, generally about 30% of them have been occupied by COVID cases. But again, if you look at it and kind of eyeball the numbers, you can see that it's suggestive of a decrease over time. So my hope is that this manifests as a trend and continues. When we look at our ICU beds, we have about 24 of them. And you can see that generally about 30% of them are filled with COVID-19 patients. So our numbers here in Ottawa County are probably a little bit lower than the state overall, but you can see or I saw on the last slide that there's variability over time. So I just want to be cautious. Yesterday, the governor and MDHHS described where we are at again as fragile. Fragile in the sense like we don't know what the holidays' impact will have on our overall case counts. And we seem to be at a point where our hospitals are doing okay. But any increase in the volume of cases could put, you know, some additional strain on those institutions. And as we move into these, you know, colder seasons with, you know, potential for other viruses circulating like influenza, we want to protect those beds as much as possible because COVID isn't the only thing that's affecting our population. Moving away from hospitalizations into deaths overall, I apologize for the small numbers on this page, but please just pay attention to this is time on the bottom. You can see that the number of cases that have passed away increased substantially through October and November. So last week, we had 17 deaths reported and two weeks ago, we had 28 deaths in a single week. So these are still elevated. You can see that the number looks like it's a three here, but this week has not ended yet. And so there will probably continue to be an accumulation of deaths over time. Overall, the themes you're probably seeing are that we've had a lot of cases. Hospitalizations have gone up or been sustained and that deaths have increased as well. So COVID-19 has had a profound impact on our community through October and November. Okay, moving away from some of the data around what's going on with COVID as a condition in Ottawa County, I want to talk just for a second about a survey we did here in Ottawa County the week before Thanksgiving. We asked 212 people in adults in Ottawa County about what they think about lots of things, including what they think about taking the COVID vaccine. And I want to point out that the data that you see in front of you, if you look at the red circle there, you can see that overall, 71% of people said that they would definitely or probably get the COVID vaccine. Please keep in mind that this is a small sample. It's not a representative sample, meaning you don't bet the ranch on this data. You use it to help maybe tweak the direction you're already going. So if your direction is true north, this data can help you, you know, shift things by a few degrees to help make sure that you're hitting your targets. So the main takeaway here is that there's a lot of people in Ottawa County that would get the COVID-19 vaccine. And that's really encouraging to me and makes me hopeful for the future because it is a way for us to get immunity to COVID-19. The more immunity we have, you know, the faster we can get back to normal. During the invocation today, there is just, you know, a plea to say, can we put COVID-19 behind us? And this is one of the ways that we can get that done. And we can only get that done if people are willing to take it. So the takeaway is that there's a lot of people in Ottawa County that would be, are ready and willing to get the COVID-19 vaccine. So just the takeaways, we still see sustained elevated case numbers, hospitalizations, deaths, but there may be some improvement in the case rates. We're still waiting to see the effect of Thanksgiving. School-aged children have similar positivity to the rest of Ottawa County. And that in our community, thankfully, a lot of people are at least willing to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. If you want to learn more, you can visit the CDC's website. And just to continue to remember, remind everyone that some of the best ways that we can prevent COVID-19 are through hand washing, masking and social distancing. And this is recommended for pretty much everyone. So commissioners, I think that's it for me and I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, hey, Durrell or Lisa?
Go ahead.
Hey, I think we've had this question in this conversation before about college students. With the new CDC guidelines, if college students are coming home and they can get a test two or three days before, what does that mean when they get home? Does that mean that they can, if they wanted to quarantine for lesser time?
Lisa, did you want to start with that one?
Lisa, you're muted.
Sorry about that. You know, that is a tough question and we've been getting that a lot. You know, with the state and what the CDC are saying is you don't want to blend households right now. Essentially, when a college student comes home from college, they would be considered of a different household. And so the best thing for them to do when they get home is to quarantine for 10 days. The test, as we've mentioned before, is really only as good as the day that it comes back, either positive or negative. It only tells you what your status is on that day. You know, a student could start quarantining prior to coming home, which would be a really smart idea. So there are some things that students can do, but it's rather precarious. And, you know, again, bringing households together at this time, based on our current data, is not recommended.
So the testing prior to leaving campus really doesn't do much, is what you're saying?
Well, it tells you their status on that day. But, you know, like we said earlier in the presentation, 90 to 99% of people who have been exposed to COVID will show symptoms between days one and 10. The other 1 to 10% could show up between, you know, days 10 and 14. So there's a long span of time where those symptoms can show up after a person has been exposed. So, yeah, the test, the test isn't going to tell you the whole story. Durrell, is there anything you would add to that?
I'd say that the test, I think, still has some value in the sense that it can tell you your status the day you're leaving campus. So if you're exposed days before that, it might detect you having symptoms even before you think about going home, which means that you can take precautions like, you know, try to make arrangements to stay where you're at longer so you don't knowingly expose family members. So I think Lisa, you know, nailed it. It's only one part of the picture, but I don't want to discount its value. I think there's still a little bit of value in testing before you leave.
Thank you, Durrell.
Especially to pick up the cases. So, thank you, Durrell.
Okay, Greg has a question.
Yeah, Lisa, I had a business call me and maybe some of you folks have had these same calls, but I had a business call me saying that somebody had popped in from the health department and asking questions about sanitation and mask and what have you. And he went on to say that they didn't have any ID with them or a business card, so we don't know if this was a legit call or not. So could you explain to us, the business board and those that are zoomed in, what is really protocol when the health department comes into a business to check on something? Is that just haphazard or is it complaint-driven?
It is complaint-driven. The story that you're describing sounds slightly suspicious unless perhaps it was a food establishment. Because for food establishments, we routinely regulate food establishments. We are in there doing routine inspections twice a year. We do step into our food establishments periodically, so that would maybe be one situation where that could occur. All other kinds of businesses, they would have, in general, received a couple of letters indicating that they had or that we had received a complaint before we would go out and do a visit. We have just done visits where we just have done observation, but I'm not aware of any where we were asking questions and, you know, investigating just in general like that. It's always complaint-driven.
You could tell our businesses that unless, if the health department comes into your business, they will have some type of ID maybe around their neck or their pocket and give you at least a business card so there's some connectability, correct?
Absolutely, 100%. And I would say that a business should ask for that ID and they should expect that identification. And we want all of our businesses to be safe. We know that there are some scams out there right now. We've been notified by our state departments. And so we really encourage businesses, families, just people who get phone calls to ask, ask the question.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question?
Garcia.
Lisa, Randy Mepelink. I have a, I want to make sure I understood what you were saying earlier. And so I'm going to ask for some clarification to make sure my question isn't because I was misunderstanding, okay?
Okay.
So if I understand, the CDC came out with the seven and 10 guidelines. Do I understand what you're saying is that we're recommending stricter guidelines in the CDC? Or are we following the CDC?
We are following the CDC at this time. We are following the CDC at this time. So the CDC guides, and I don't have it right up in front of me, but Randy, I'd be happy to send you the link so that you have exactly what the CDC says for your use. The CDC says that you may allow a ten-day quarantine or a seven-day quarantine if it doesn't interfere with the community's ability to get testing for diagnostic purposes. So maybe clumsily tried to describe that in the state of Michigan, and we're going based on what Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is recommending for the state, that we stick with the ten-day isolation rather than going to the seven-day at this point because we have such widespread transmission and the need to maintain those tests for people who need it for diagnostic purposes. So people who go in isolation for ten days do not need to get a test in order to get out. They'll get, they'll be notified of a ten-day quarantine. And as long as they agree to monitor for symptoms for the full fourteen-day period, they will be able to go back to kind of normal. I don't know if it's normal, but they will be able to go out of quarantine after the ten-day period. Does that, is that understandable?
Yeah, that helps because employers have to pay COVID pay.
Yes.
Law, okay? And it's fourteen days, we're saying then employers are going to be paying more COVID pay with. And what my concern is if the CDC says ten, we're at fourteen, are they still going to get the tax credit for the other four?
Yeah, that is a great question. And we've, Al, I believe, has talked to our local policymakers to bring some of those concerns to the governor's office. We have asked through our local association for some of those to be addressed. There still exists PA two thirty-eight, which is a public act that guides employers and what they should do around COVID cases. And in that act, it still states that fourteen days of quarantine are required. And so, you know, we're in a little bit of a sticky period here with legally what is required based on conflicting, I guess, the conflict between Public Act two thirty-eight and the CDC's guidance. So it may be, you know, a situation where employer, you may want to consult with your corporation counsel.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Roger.
Al?
Lisa, maybe you can answer too. I want to verify on the percentages of positive tests. I thought I heard him say that it was at fifteen percent for Ottawa County. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. As of yesterday, the number was sixteen percent. And over the last two to three weeks, the number has consistently been at or above fifteen percent for Ottawa County.
Okay, and then I thought you said from the kids in school, they start at fifteen percent and it goes up to high school goes up to twenty percent. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. You usually just see, and we've seen an increase in the data. So the younger kids are typically a little bit lower. Middle schoolers or in the middle and high schools, schoolers typically have the higher positivity rates. And we'll see if that trend continues, but that's just what we're seeing right now.
Thank you.
Roger. I got it. Chair?
Go ahead.
Hey, Lisa, this is Kyle Turbstra. I have some, I have quite a few questions for clarification. So if you could just kind of answer yes or no, and if it's a no, I'll mark it down. We can go back and visit that. Sound fair enough?
Sure.
Okay, so looking at the the meeting that we're attending right now, there's commissioners there. If we look at my OSHA emergency rules, number five point eight, it states that the employer shall create a policy prohibiting in-person work for employees to the extent that their work activities can feasibly be completed remotely. With that being said, are we in violation of that right now? Yes or no?
I'm not actually sure. I have probably a one-inch view of the boardroom right now. So I can't really tell who's in the boardroom and who isn't. Kyle, I would also defer that question to probably corporation counsel because I do know that there are different laws governing public meetings where government has to be able to perform government business. And I'm not an expert on that.
Okay, so then we look at to the last board meeting with the face shields. My OSHA emergency rules seven dash six or seven point six. The employer shall require face coverings in a shared space, including during in-person meetings, restrooms and hallways. A face shield that is not an adequate face covering. So we were in violation of that, correct?
We do often find people to be in violation of certain elements of the guidance. What we do, Kyle, is we point those out to businesses when they come to our attention and we notify them. And ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, those are corrected. I believe that was brought to the administrator's attention and that was immediately corrected.
Okay, so that was a yes. And then looking back at our meeting, October thirteen, our first meeting in October. Commissioners were not wearing masks.
Kyle?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you to, you know, I think you can ask those questions later on at our board meeting. I don't think those are appropriate questions to be asking.
You don't like the fact that I'm bringing up that we were in violation of many laws?
I think that if you recall what she just said, many of those things we've corrected when we found out what the laws were.
I would like to continue if that's possible.
I don't know, what's the, what's your opinion of the rest of the commission?
I mean, I don't, I just would like some clarification on this. I've asked through emails and I really haven't gotten a response regarding these meetings. So in meeting number thirteen, October thirteenth, commissioners weren't wearing masks. We were told that it wasn't violation of law. If you look at Director Gordon's gathering prohibition and face covering order dated October nine, so that Friday before.
Kyle, I'm going to stop you a minute. If you look at what happened today, you'll see that everyone in this room has a mask on. There's not a mask on. So we've made the corrections and I'm going to ask our attorney to just respond right now.
Okay, can I?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, my annual report is further on the agenda. And one of the things we're going to talk about really is a proper understanding of what corporation council's role is. A fundamental responsibility of my position is for me to handle these questions that any of you individually have. Not Lisa Stefanoski, she's not an attorney, she can't give a legal opinion. And so Commissioner Turbstra's questions are properly directed to me in a proper setting. Okay, and we don't, if a legal opinion is requested of my office, it ought to be done in a respectful way pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, which guides my services to Ottawa County. And I'd be happy to entertain Commissioner Turbstra's questions and because they're properly posed to me. I've been appointed under the state statute to answer those questions. And I'd be happy to do so in the right forum. But it simply isn't appropriate for a county officer, such as the health officer, to be posed with legal questions from anyone, particularly an elected official of Ottawa County. So that's my opinion.
Okay.
And if I could just add to, Kyle, I have had a number of people contact or we have at Ottawa County Department of Public Health where they've notified our office. It's important for everybody to know that we're not out shopping for people who are violating any of the MDHHS epidemic orders. Any information that comes to our office and we become aware of it, we immediately notify whatever, whether it's an organization or a government, to let them know that we've received complaints. And we've done that many, many, many times since March, many times since March. And we've, like I said, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, people have been very open and would say, oh, gosh, we didn't realize this or we're happy to make that correction. Thank you for pointing it out. And so that's kind of been our role is just letting people know. Now, if there's non-compliance, obviously by law, and Doug will explain this too, we have to take further action. But they've had very, very little of that.
Okay, is there anyone else from the?
Yeah, I got one question, Roger.
Go ahead.
Lisa Philguyers. If you know you had COVID or you know you have the symptoms and you start quarantining yourself on that day and then you get tested like ten days later, you test positive, are you quarantined for another fourteen days from your positive test?
Generally, it's you test, or excuse me, you quarantine for ten days from the symptom onset. So the first day that you have symptoms, that's when you start quarantining or isolating, excuse me.
Right.
Now, gosh, that's a tricky one because if you test positive, you may, you know, still have positivity. And so sometimes people who have severe cases will get a twenty-day isolation. And so that would be one that probably we'd have you talk to one of our public health nurses or experts to help discern whether or not you should have an extended period of isolation.
And I did, I talked to Dr. Heidem, I know it was pretty confusing. And he said, you know, I'm just a messenger, don't kill the messenger, just the state. So I took it from there. Thank you.
Lisa, I also have another question, Frank Garcia here. I don't know whether you are going to speak on the availability of the first wave of vaccine coming into the state of Michigan, whether you have any current information on that. And then my other question along with that is, would there be any cost to the vaccine? Because I wonder on Darrell's small survey he took, whether the folks who would be willing to take a vaccine, if it had anything to do with income or their socioeconomic status.
Those are excellent questions. Thank you. We are working very, very closely with our healthcare partners. As we speak, we've got several meetings a week in planning and organizing the distribution of vaccine. We've been, we're getting a little bit of mixed information from the state, but we've heard anywhere from three hundred thousand doses statewide to eighty thousand. And that's the range that could be coming to us as early as next week. There has been a group of federal partners at the federal level who have identified who will be the first ones to get those vaccines. And they've prioritized healthcare workers, long-term care facility workers, pharmacy workers, EMS workers and public health workers are the top tier. Now, that doesn't mean everybody in each one of those spaces will get it. You know, when we get the first batch coming into the state of Michigan, we're even prioritizing within each of those groups. And obviously, it's going to be the people that'll get it first are those that are working with higher-risk populations, fragile populations, healthcare workers that are working in ICU, for example, will probably be the first group that will get those workers that are working in long-term care facilities because that is such a vulnerable population, they will probably be in the first tier. The distribution is going to be tricky. Hospitals and hospital affiliates, so for example, in north, in the northern part of the county, North Ottawa, has their own EMS, so they will be vaccinating every hospital employee plus EMS and they have their own pharmacy. So they would be responsible for vaccinating everybody in that space. So outside of what's affiliated with one of our hospitals, that would probably fall to the health department to be at least providing some of the coordination and maybe even some of the vaccination for populations that don't fall into the hospital-affiliated people. So we're working closely with, again, pharmacies and pharmacies may be helping us to vaccinate long-term care facility workers. We are also talking with our EMS workers. They are also possibly going to be helping us to vaccinate some of the other populations that may not be picked up by the hospital system. There are actually four different vaccines. Two of them have been approved by the government for distribution. One of those is a two-dose vaccine. That is the Pfizer vaccine. That will be, I believe, what we're hearing is that will be the first vaccine that will be coming to us. So that kind of brings about a few extra challenges because we have to ask people to come back for a second time for a second dose of the vaccine. And so kind of working through some of that. The second vaccine that's coming should be very close on the heels of the Pfizer vaccine. That's a one-dose vaccine, I believe, and so that'll be a little bit easier to distribute. Another complicating factor though is if you get the Pfizer vaccine versus the, I can't think of the name of the other company. Darrell, you might need to help.
Moderna.
Moderna, oh, thank you. Thank you, Roger. Moderna, is if you get a Pfizer vaccine, you have to get the second dose of Pfizer vaccine. You can't get Pfizer then Moderna. So we're going to have to do a lot of record-keeping and tracking and inventorying and working with partners on this. That's the most important thing. In January, AstraZeneca and Johnson and Johnson are, we're hoping that those two vaccines will also get approved. So it'll expand the access to vaccines hopefully soon after the start of the year. So it's going to be a fast and furious process. I think the most important takeaway for all of you is that we're working very closely with our healthcare partners to make sure that we have a coordinated, well-thought-out action plan for getting vaccine to our citizens as soon as possible.
Okay, will there be a cost, Lisa?
No, this vaccine is being provided for by our federal government, so no cost.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we're going to move on. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Darrell. Look forward to seeing you next week or two weeks from now. And hopefully we'll have a really good presentation then. The next thing on the agenda is I've asked our prosecuting attorney, Ron France, to just give us a little story about his, how many years has it been? Because he's retiring in another couple of weeks.
Oh, Mr. Chairperson, it'll be forty-three years and seven months. An interesting story if you're interested in what life was like in nineteen seventy-seven when I started. I had never been to Grand Haven before. I walked into the courthouse, I met Judge Jacob Ponstein. He said, go up and talk to Wes Nykamp, he's the prosecutor, maybe he's looking for an assistant. So I went up there and he actually had three assistants at the time, but he hired me on the spot under a program known as CETA, Comprehensive Employment and Training Act. It's meant for those that need training and need education. And so here I am, a brand-new law grad, and I walked in and got the job. First-year salary was ten thousand dollars. That sounds terrible maybe by today's standards, but the average starting salary for a new law grad at that time was eleven-five. So it wasn't all that bad. I bought a house, a cottage on Lake Michigan in nineteen seventy-seven for fifty thousand dollars. Advertised in the Grand Haven Tribune for a long period of time with no takers. People thought it was way too much. Now, with my ten thousand dollar salary, I couldn't get a mortgage, so I bought it on a land contract. There was a lot, two lots north of me, a hundred-foot lot that was on the market for fifteen thousand dollars with no takers. That's easily worth a million now. In any event, I started out with no office and no desk. In any event, I, I started out, uh, with no office and no desk. I sat in the, uh, law library and did my work at the conference table in there. And, uh, you know, lots happened over the last period of time. I was, I was an assistant for, um, a few years, then I was, uh, promoted to chief assistant. I did that for 13 years. And then in, uh, 1991, when, uh, my boss Wes Nykamp was elected as a circuit judge, I was appointed by those circuit judges. It sounds like an inside job, but, uh, there were others to the position of prosecuting attorney, and I first ran for reelection in 1992. So a lot's happened over the years, uh, 43 and a half in. I guess what I would say is, uh, Ottawa County is a great place to live. I'm extremely blessed to have lived here, to have raised a family. I like to think in some small way that, uh, I or my office did contribute to the quality of life we enjoy here. Um, just as an example, I heard on the radio yesterday that Kent County is on its 35th homicide for 2020. We've had two. We're a lot smaller, I guess, but not all that much smaller. We're still a pretty big county, and I, I really think that people live and care for each other and they resolve their differences in a much, much better way than some other people in other parts of the state. So I'm, I'm blessed to be here. And I want you to know that, uh, you're blessed to have Lee Fisher as your next prosecutor. He's a great guy, he's my chief assistant, and I have all the confidence in the world in him.
If you want to just stay there just a minute, I have a resolution that I'd like to, uh, present you with from our board. It's quite lengthy, uh, so maybe I'll just pep to the chase and tell you. Because, um, we've been, uh, going down for a while here, but just, just so you know how much you have been appreciated by, um, this board, but boards in the past as well. And so we want to present you with this resolution, recognizing the extraordinary, unprecedented career that you've had upon retirement, at the end of, um, Ottawa County prosecutor, prosecutor.
I've been called that as well.
And, uh, so anyway, I, I'll give you this, I won't read the whole thing, you can read it later, or Pat can read it too, you can read it to Pat, that works too.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, I would, uh, make that motion, but I would also like to, uh, propose an amendment, uh, to the agenda, uh, that would be 10B, and that would be for the purpose of, um, reporting out from the review committee, uh, Mr. Vandenberg's, uh, annual performance review, um, as well as, uh, there's a wage study that all employees are participating in, and, uh, uh, being able to, uh, kind of, um, do that performance review, uh, as well as, um, some salary recommendations, uh, for, uh, January 1st of 2020 through December 31st of 2024. So there's a number of different things in this, uh, um, additional, um, amendment for, um, number 10B.
Okay. Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Link.
Yes.
Mr. Holt floor.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Zylstra.
Yes.
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 Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next thing is, uh, actions under action and report consented resolutions, Mr. Fenske.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move to approve consent resolutions, one and two, please.
Support.
It moved and supported. Comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Turpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Holt floor.
Yes.
Mr. Zalstra.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Next from administration, Mr. DeYoung, please.
The first motion is the, um, council payable for November 16th to the 27th, and the motion is to approve general claims in the amount of $6,677,547.87.
Wait a minute, my mistake. Oh, oh yeah. Okay, so we did, we did the consent resolution. So we're on the next page, B, action items.
No, not that far.
Were you reading that one?
No.
I was reading from administration, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, wrong page.
Okay. All right. From administration, the resolution to submit, the middle of coastal management grant application.
Yes.
And the motion is to adopt the resolution and approve the submitted of the application to the Michigan Coastal Zone Management Program for funding assistance to replace, repair, and construct wood stairs and boardwalks of the North Beach Park in North Ottawa Dunes.
Support.
Moved and seconded. Comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Zylstra.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Meppelink.
Yes.
Mr. Holt floor.
Yes.
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 DeYoung.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next thing is appointments from talent recruitment, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, because we do have several appointments for several committees, what I'd like to be able to do is to, uh, bulk, uh, numbers one, two, three, six, nine, and 10 into one motion. All of these are the number of applicants or the exact number of slots. So I, I'd like to put that into motion, that we do approve all of the names, uh, for, uh, items one, two, three, six, nine, and 10.
One, two, three, six, and 10.
Nine and 10.
All right. Back to that. Doug, you seconded it?
Yes, I support that, sorry.
All right. Okay. Comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Good thing, Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Meppelink.
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Holt floor.
Yes.
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 Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, for the, uh, regarding the Department of Health and Human Resources Board, uh, I'd like to place, place into nomination the names of, uh, Robert Vanderzwaag and Alice Maines, Cynthia Scolton, to fill one county resident vacancy beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2023.
Okay, Justin, would you call a roll, please?
And we'll just have, um, this is going to be a, a voice vote for the...
We have to have a second for that.
Second.
Okay, spend a second. So you're going to have to, uh, say the name of the person.
Correct, uh, so the commissioners say, or call their name, would just repeat the name of the individual, okay. Mr. Kyers.
Vince Bush.
Uh, no, Mr. We're on number four.
Number four. Well, let's try Robert Vanderzwaag then. Not like Frank just read them to me or nothing, was it? Okay.
Mr. Holt floor.
Robert Vanderzwaag.
Mr. Meppelink.
Vanderzwaag.
Mr. Turpstra.
Robert.
Mr. Garcia.
Uh, Robert Vanderzwaag or Zwag, whatever he goes by.
Mr. Zylstra.
Robert Vanderzwaag.
Mr. Fenske.
Robert Vanderzwaag.
Mr. Danenberg.
Vanderzwaag.
Mr. DeYoung.
Vanderzwaag.
Mr. Baumann.
Vanderzwaag.
Mr. Bergman.
Vanderzwaag.
And Robert Vanderzwaag has the majority of votes.
Okay, and this one, and this one is for Commissioner Kyers, regarding the Land Bank Authority, I would like to place into nomination the names of Vince Bush or Thomas Punk, uh, to fill one township representative vacancy beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2023.
Support.
Moved and supported. Comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Sir, Mr. Baumann.
Vince Bush.
Mr. Holt floor.
Bush.
Mr. Fenske.
Mr. Bush.
Mr. Turpstra.
Vince Bush.
Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Bush.
Mr. Zylstra.
Uh, Vince Bush.
Mr. Meppelink.
Mr. Bush.
Mr. Danenberg.
Bush.
Mr. DeYoung.
Bush.
Mr. Kyers.
Vince Bush.
And Mr. Bergman. And Vince Bush has the majority of votes.
Okay, regarding Parks and Recreation, I'd like to place into nomination the names of Jennifer Jones, Kate Harmon, Gregory Boynton, Lucas Hill, William Kramer, to fill two public vacancies beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2023. I do want to clarify that Lucas Hill did apply for reappointment. Yeah, I, I believe he was appointed earlier this fall. Uh, he wasn't able to make the appointment time, but he did call in expressing that he was still interested.
Support, second.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I just make a comment real quick?
Yes.
Um, Lucas Hill, uh, from what I can understand from his, uh, from the meeting notes, has not missed, uh, any commission meetings. Um, he did apply, uh, twice before he was, uh, appointed this time. Um, I'll be supporting Lucas Hill just I think that, you know, he is part of the Ottawa County family and, you know, unfortunately, he did not make his appointment like, uh, Chairman, Commissioner Garcia said, but I, but I do think that he is, you know, shown himself to be a valuable part of the commission, and so I will be supporting him.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I the same agree with Hill at this point also. Lucas Hill.
Okay. All right. Justin, would you call the roll, please? We need to pick two, correct?
That's correct, two names. Uh, Mr. Baumann.
Harmon, Hill.
Mr. Garcia.
Harmon and Hill.
Mr. Meppelink.
Harmon and Hill.
Mr. Holt floor.
Harmon and Hill.
Mr. DeYoung.
Harmon and Hill.
Mr. Zylstra.
Hill and Jones.
Mr. Turpstra.
Harmon and Hill.
Mr. Kyers.
Harmon and Hill.
Mr. Danenberg.
Harmon and Hill.
Mr. Fenske.
Harmon and Hill.
And Mr. Baumann, or Mr. Bergman.
Harmon and Hill.
Sir, Kate Harmon and Lucas Hill have the, uh, requisite number of votes.
All right.
Okay, and our last appointment is under the Road Commission to place into nomination the names of Betty Gajewski, Curtis Vandercoovering, Vivica Vancouvering, I'm sorry, John Rice and Robert Michaelia, to fill one, uh, two member vacancies beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2026. Betty says a reappointment. Uh, Curtis, I believe, has applied, uh, Mr. Vancouvering, you know, has applied before as well. So, uh, but those are the two names that the interview committee is moving forward as, or recommending.
Okay, any comments, questions? Justin, would you call the roll, please?
I need a support.
Support.
Okay, you got a support. Okay, thank you.
Sir, um, Mr. Turpstra.
Two names I need to give.
Betty Curtis.
And Mr. Holt floor.
Betty Curtis.
Mr. Zylstra.
Rice Gajewski.
Mr. Kyers.
Um, Betty and Curtis.
Mr. DeYoung.
Betty and Curtis.
Mr. Meppelink.
Gajewski and Vancouvering.
Mr. Baumann.
Gajewski and Vancouvering.
Betty Gajewski, Curtis Vancouvering.
Mr. Danenberg.
Gajewski and Vancouvering.
Mr. Garcia.
Gajewski and Vancouvering.
Mr. Bergman.
Betty and Curtis.
Betty Gajewski and Curtis Vancouvering have the requisite number of votes.
Um, the next thing is Ottawa County Corporate Council Annual Report.
For an item after number 10.
Yes.
Pardon? Is that my misunderstanding? We amended the agenda, Mr. Fenske, at the beginning of the meeting for a...
For item to the 10B. 10B.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
I don't quite know.
Good afternoon. I must say that, uh...
We almost eliminated you there.
Justin did his part for his predecessor there, be very pleased with him. Um, Harmon and Hill sounds like a great law firm. Um, and Ron just left. I was going to compliment him because, um, in addition to the report that I presented for you, which is a confidential document, in part because I've described all the legal opinions that are confidential that I've written, uh, for the county, uh, in the last 12 months, um, I was going to focus on, um, the institutionalization of my office, and Ron deserves a great deal of credit for that because the Office of Corporation Counsel is a statutory office, and it was designed for larger counties that are getting more sophisticated. Historically, the prosecutor has served as the county's civil counsel. The, not only the principal law enforcement officer of the county criminally, but also the, uh, officer appointed to make sure that the county is complying with civil laws. And so 4971 allows a county board of commissioners to pull that function from the prosecutor and place it within an office called Corporation Counsel. And of course, Ottawa is always a little differently. In 1990, uh, your predecessors appointed Greg Rapley as Corporation Counsel, and they stuck him under the guidance of the prosecuting attorney, uh, who soon became Ron, Ron France. And Ron was instrumental, I think, with, working with Greg and Bob Osterbahn at the time, to eventually straighten that out and pull that function out of the prosecutor's office, which is the intention of the statute, and put it in a, in a separate, uh, office there to serve under, um, our system of organization, under the direct, um, administration of the administrator, uh, and then reporting, of course, to you who makes the appointment. But this office, in an institutionalized sense, is there for all of Ottawa County government to make sure that all the various, um, departments, elected officials, uh, the collateral organizations that we fund, like the courts, um, comply with the civil laws of the state of Michigan. Um, I'm pleased that we're making progress in the institutionalization of the office. I'm flattered that among the 20 opinions that I authored in 2020, 20 for 2020, uh, were requests from the courts themselves. They've seen the benefit on certain operational, uh, issues, certain labor issues, to seek the advice of Corporation Counsel, to help them, uh, in those aspects of their functioning. That's progress. Um, the elected officials will often seek my guidance. The elected officials will often seek my guidance directly to make sure that in the tasks that they field and have independent authority to perform, they're complying with the law and with best practices in terms of, uh, the statutes and the system that's created under those statutes. That's progress. I've been performing that function most acutely for public health this year. Working with Lisa, working with the deputy health officer and Doc Heidel to make sure that with all the complexities of COVID and the different forms of law that are coming at us, we are compliant with, uh, that law. And that they're performing their independent responsibilities in a way that's consistent with Michigan law and their responsibilities. And frankly, this has been a year of unparalleled challenge, I think, uh, at all levels of government. But even at local government, trying to make sure that we follow the law, whether we like the law, whether the law was enacted by a Republican or a Democrat, our system of government requires fealty to the law. And let's be honest, uh, we have had a level of partisanship that we hoped four years ago might, be disrupted somewhat, but unfortunately, it's, it's on steroids now. And there's this common perception among even our public that if the law is the product of a partisan group that we don't respect or, uh, agree with, that it may not be something we need to follow. And we've had these, uh, challenges in our history before that frankly resulted in, at the, uh, city level, this move towards non-partisanship. And many city councils now are nonpartisan offices. The courts are nonpartisan as a result of this flare-up that we had of hyper-partisanship, um, years ago. Uh, at the county level, we're still partisan in that you're elected, uh, to part, from a partisan position, but when you come and you serve and you take that oath, you are agreeing to administer the laws of the state of Michigan and their rules and regulations, no matter what their source is. And I've spent a lot of time with citizens from this county trying to, uh, explain to them really basic civics and how important it is for all of us to try to work within the laws as we see fit. And I would encourage all of you in the performance of your obligations, as we, you know, encountered a few minutes ago. If you've got concerns about whether Ottawa County as a corporate body is following the law, then do what the elected officials, I am proud to say, have been doing. Do what the other department heads have been doing. Come to me and let's sort through those because they're very complicated questions. This body, for example, is not subject to my OSHA. You're not employees. You're elected officials. What happens around this dais is actually privileged. You can say things right here, right now, that you could never say outside there, outside this room. So those are complications that we need to sort through and discuss. And we can do that in a organized way, in a way that serves, uh, our community well corporately and in the community, uh, at large. So I've enjoyed, uh, this year. We've been very, very busy with COVID, looking at, you know, all these things that have come up in very unusual settings, unprecedented settings. You know, it's hard to look and find a comparable situation to what we've encountered as officers, uh, anywhere, but I think we've trundled through it fairly well. And I hope that, uh, now that COVID, you know, we've got another half a year for sure, but it, it looks like the end is in sight. Today's the first day that somewhere in the world, these vaccines are actually being administered in UK, that we've got a light finally at the end of the tunnel so we can get back to normalcy. Unless you have any particular questions of me, that's really, I rest on the report that I've circulated, uh, but I would be happy to answer any questions than any of the commissioners have at this time.
I've got a question, Roger. Commissioner Kiers?
Yes, go ahead, Phil.
Okay, Doug, you know what? That's one thing that I find very hard with, with, with the constituents and try to, try to tell them that, you know, when the state law comes down through the Health Department, they think, well, we can just override it and, you know, you know, we're using our strong arm. And I'm, I'm trying to, trying to explain to them, it's like, you know, we really can't tell, you know, the state or the Health Department what to do if the state comes down. And I'm, I'm glad you emphasized that. So thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. It, it, it's almost a militaristic type organization that we have. And, um, I hate to say we're sergeants. Maybe some of you are lieutenants, but we're, we don't have any generals down here at this level of government. And that doesn't mean we're not important. We're, we're on the front lines. We like to think that we help people more readily than perhaps they do in Lansing. But there are limitations to what we can do and what we must do in our role for the system to work.
Anyone else? I just want to say, Doug, in every time, you know, and all of us as commissioners have been getting these letters from, uh, people concerning, um, the Constitution and our responsibility. And it, it, I always think about the fact that, I remember, you know, every year when we get up there and we raise our right hand and we say we, we will support the Constitution of the United States, the state of Michigan. And, you know, and I'm thinking, you know, uh, that's exactly what we need to remember is, is that there, there may not be some laws that we agree with, but we've said that we will uphold those laws. That's, that's what I said. And I think that each one of us has said that same thing. And I think it's important for us to remember that always. The bottom line is that we need to respect those laws, no matter who made them.
Yeah, it's hard to do.
Anyway.
But it's important.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, Paul Sacks, Ottawa County Planning and Performance. He's been sitting there patiently waiting all this time. Thanks, Paul.
Yes. Enjoyed listening to the discussions. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to share our department's fiscal year 2020 annual report. 2020 clearly has been a, a challenge on all of us. And right from the very beginning this spring, I was incredibly impressed with how well staff seamlessly transitioned to a remote work environment and still maintain their high productivity levels with, uh, our critical work tasks. And additionally, you know, not only is our department's high-profile workload increased this year, but staff stepped up tremendously to offer their skill sets and their expertise to support other departments and agencies across the county. I've noted some of these in the actual report itself, under my director's notes, but just want to highlight a couple of those items where as soon as the stay-home order, uh, was issued and schools went to virtual learning, uh, we connected with the intermediate school district right off the bat and started to compile, uh, a bunch of materials and information on internet service providers and discounts and plans and opportunities that we assembled to be distributed to families and students across the county so that they could get the access that they needed, at least become more aware of it. We also had our staff partnered with Public Health Department and have routinely collected and analyzed data for the Public Health Department. For instance, looking at staffing availability during their, their hectic times of volunteering at particular sites and other crisis management efforts. We also collected and analyzed data on behalf of the Public Health Department for, uh, long-range care facility, long-term care facilities and funeral homes all during the pandemic. Moreover, staff were able to successfully secure CARES Act dollars from the USDA to collect and source locally-produced food to be distributed to those in need. We also connected with Michigan State University Extension and were able to obtain the right PPE equipment for ag producers across the county. So for me, that, those additional actions of our staff during this, uh, wild year just demonstrated the exceptional, uh, desire to go above and beyond. So I'm very impressed with my staff for that. I'd like to now go through a few slides talking about some of the, the tremendously great projects that each of our, uh, operational divisions has been working on over the past year. Like to start with the Performance Improvement Division. We conducted in collaboration with the City of Holland, an organizational review of all their 30-plus boards, commissions and committees to ensure that they are strategically aligned with the City of Holland's mission and values and goals. And that was a, a great endeavor that we recently completed. We're also currently engaged with the City of Zealand with the support of Tim Klunder. We're doing an organizational review of their, uh, a couple of city departments, maintenance and building and motor pool and cemetery, parks departments. There are some impending retirements in the city offices. So we're doing an organizational review to see how they can become more efficient and look at operational enhancements for their own city administration. We also supported Spring Lake Township with doing an update to their master plan. Lots of data analysis, graphical representations, uh, for the township. Collaborated extensively with the Parks Department on helping them to update their open space plan with survey collection, data analysis, graphics, and adding little more visual flair to the, uh, Parks Department plan. We're also engaged in a multi-year project with the Community Action House. They are looking to open up the region's first food club that will offer access to more fresh and healthy and affordable food for underserved community. So we've performed strategic planning with Community Action House and we'll be doing, uh, be a three-year evaluation to look at their outcomes and results and ensure that this program continues to be successful, which is modeled after other similar programs across the state. We also worked with the LDF, LDFA and the City of Holland, uh, the Smart Zone to update some of their tax increment financing projections over the course of that Smart Zone and the City of Holland. We've also, in addition to some COVID-related support, we've continued to support the Public Health Department with a variety of evaluations, program, uh, improvement initiatives, looking at meetup, eat-up program for school kids during the summer to get access to food, working with Health and Parks for Step It Up Program, Senior Project Fresh, uh, flu vaccine data collection and analysis. It's been a tremendous partnership with public health in terms of supporting them with data, research and analysis. And then general data assistance, we, we get calls all the time and emails for a variety of reasons to do data support. Continue to do that. Land use planning projects, this division, it's one of the biggest undertakings that we have. I want to start off and just talk about the future land use vision, just briefly. There's a vision for the county that we need to create in light of groundwater challenges, transportation challenges, expanding park systems, affordable housing. We are the fastest growing, as you know, we're the fastest growing county in the state and we have been. There should be a, a vision for how we want to grow and what we want to look like in the future. So a lot of these projects that I'll share here in a minute are all tied to this vision. And just, and they're these decision layers, that I like to call them, on how this all comes together. We need to create a vision for the future of Ottawa County. What are those major components? It's environment and health. It's transportation and mobility. It's community and economic development and it's infrastructure and technology. What are these initiatives that we work on in our office with collaboration with all of our partners? Groundwater resource management. Shoreline protection and erosion, fluctuating water levels in Lake Michigan and flooding issues inland. Sensitive areas protection is incredibly important, especially when you tie that to recharge with our groundwater availability and, and wetlands. Non-motorized connectivity, incredibly important to add that, enhance quality of life across the county. So we look at it from a county perspective. How do we enhance connectivity from a non-motorized perspective? And then continued transportation corridor preservation and planning. That relates right back to M231 Phase II corridor work that we're involved in. And public transportation networks. We routinely assess the opportunity for public transit systems across the county. Has been traditionally, from a, a countywide perspective, we need to dial that in and look more sub-regional connectivity in the long-range perspective. Affordable housing, we're involved in that now with the re-establishment of the Housing Commission. Very important. Brownfield redevelopment, lot of work in that space. It's a really important element to our continued growth and land management across the county when we can utilize brownfield incentives to redevelop underutilized contaminated properties, that, the urban infill development, if you will, very important. It ties to ag preservation as well. Multiple undertakings in that arena. Infrastructure and technology, broadband access and affordability. It's really been highlighted this year on the need for more action in that space. Storm and wastewater management tied to municipal water connections. Very important when it ties down to, and relates to our groundwater issues and where appropriate development or where development should be appropriately situated as it relates to infrastructure. That's just an overview, kind of that big vision of everything we're pulling together in the office. Housing Commission, like I mentioned, that's been reactivated. Got a great board, uh, chaired by Doug Zylstra, doing some good initiatives in partnership with Ryan Kilpatrick of Housing Next. Groundwater Sustainability Initiative, that is multifaceted, highly complex. We do have some sensors starting to go on the ground now for monitoring. Multiple education endeavors that are being pursued. We're also creating a, working on establishing the County Groundwater Board very soon, as well as, uh, we are in the process now of looking at a conceptual development ordinance across the county as it relates to private well use. M231 corridor preservation, that one's kind of a standstill right now. Where we at, uh, where we are with MDOT and the state, but continued preservation of that corridor is very important. Especially looking at that interchange location at 196. We'll continue to work with local units of government and educating the public in that arena. We also completed a report to metropolitan planning organizations in the county in collaboration with all three directors of the MPOs. Uh, we've been meeting, uh, routinely and talking about collaborative projects into the future. It's a great bridge building opportunity with our MPOs enhances our collaboration in that space also. Spoonville, Phase II, what an awesome trail. We are on the, the finishing touches right now of Spoonville. We will have a press release that will be announced here very soon to the public that it's open. I'm hoping that next spring we can have a ribbon cutting. It is, I encourage you to check that trail out if you haven't already. It's got some beautiful ravines, board blocks, some really cool views, so. I think that'll probably be, uh, maybe the last trail project our department will create. It was a, it was a doozy multi-year one. I might leave the rest of, uh, trail development like this to Parks Department, but we'll see. I'll talk to Jason about that. Then we are continuing to work on non-motorized connectivity plan across the. Then we are continuing to work on non-motorized connectivity plan across the county and did provide a report to the City of Holland, to some of their advocacy groups to do a pilot project with a protected bike lane in the City of Holland. And we also continue to hold trainings for new planning commissioners and CBA members at the local level. We conducted in-person trainings in February. We have about over 150 attendees for these. Believe we will hold those virtually coming up here this winter. West Michigan Pike, it's also, that's one of our more fun projects. You know, the historic Pike Route travels throughout Ottawa County off of US 31, meanders through some country roads. So we received some funding from the Grand Haven Community Foundation to get some signage for people to go along that route. And we have some of those big Pike markers in our office, too, that we were able to secure and restore if you haven't seen them. Should take them out. They're pretty big. Try and pick one up, too, they're about 500 some pounds. Economic Development Projects, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, they were able to successfully secure about $300,000 EPA grant for assessment and cleanup. The ERA Board also distributed locally-driven brownfield incentive program to about four projects this year. We've been continuing to work in the agricultural space, developing a long-range strategic plan for how to support agriculture. In addition to the PDR program, which is up to over 400 acres preserved and another about 150 in the queue, program is doing really well, has really taken off over the last couple of years. Staff recently received a grant from the USDA to implement a succession programming for new farmers wanting to come into the space. From a survey that we did last year, over 65% of our farmers are over the age of 65. Significant opportunity there to connect young farmers with the land. So not only succession planning, mentor connections, also looking to create an ag land locator website, really help facilitate and support this robust industry for our county. We also did have a, I think, what was it, Matt, our fourth annual TAPUS, fourth annual Farms Are the Tapus Event at Terrace Square. We did it this year, it was in person. Everyone was, had a really nice time, socially distanced and raised almost a record setting. Yeah, we did raise more than last year in funding, which is really, really great. Broadband initiative as well, I touched on that. Incredibly important to address this. The time is ripe for this to occur. I anticipate releasing an RFP within the next couple of weeks to secure a consultant to do some comprehensive data collection and analysis across the county to really define and refine where our areas of need are from access and affordability. Lighterside, have an amazing staff. We take breaks once in a while outside of working hours, get together, have some fun. This is this past summer, we met the state park, we planted at Dahlia Acres, we planted their gardens for them, took a tour of Spoonville Trail. Staff also, we purchased a drone, highly effective for a lot of our site assessments that we do and other programming and promotional work. And we've been having fun every day and having Zoom meetings. As fun as you can be in that environment, we're making do. And then also lastly, just want to touch on some of the specialized support of staff in my office, Rich Lakberg in particular, he worked with Justin to educate people on the election process, and he also worked with Patrick and the Lakeshore Nonprofit Association or Nonprofit Alliance on educating people about the need to complete the census. So there's just more of that community support work that our office is involved in. Here's staff, they're amazing. They do incredibly good professional work, highly dedicated, and that we are all honored and humbled to serve administration, the board, and the county. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody have any questions of Paul?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, no, as Chair of the Housing Commission, I just want to thank Paul and James and Pam and the entire team at PPID for their work over the past year. They've done great work and I look forward to 2021 and, you know, and beyond, helping create housing choice here in Ottawa County. So thanks again, Paul, and thanks to your entire team.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Paul, I do have a quick question. Is possible to get a hard copy of this report in our mailboxes?
Yeah, I can absolutely do that, Frank.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question, are we considering maybe having a broadband commission established? Or is that not necessary?
It's been talked about. It would be timing to sort that out. I have, we've been working on assembling at least a data collection steering committee for now. When we start to pull in that data, we have cross-representation to help us take a look at it. How that formulates and turns into a formal broadband board, we'll have to determine, but it is, again, it's being talked about.
Okay, thank you.
Frank, on that, on that point, Paul, we just got Paul appointed to the NACO Broadband, and they're doing an intense study on that. So Paul will be on that board along with Jim Story from Eligan, them and the two from Michigan. So NACO, so that's one of their high priorities this year is broadband. So maybe that could help us out some, too.
Thank you. I'm honored to be part of that NACO Task Force as well.
Anyone else? Paul, I just want to express my thanks for helping us out on the panel for the Borlight Power in Grand Haven and what they're doing. And we had a panel discussion one night and Paul was able to help us out with that. So thank you for your help that evening as well.
You're welcome.
And thank you for what you're doing for the county as well. So thanks.
Thank you.
The next thing is a fourth quarter update on the 2019-2020 Business Plan.
Yes, the quiet engine of county government continued even through COVID and all the other things going on this year, like shoreline erosion and flooding and reaction to George Floyd and all those kinds of things. So yeah, I'll just run through this quickly. So Goal One, maintain and improve the strong financial position of the county. We did end the fiscal year in the black, and we did adopt a budget for the following fiscal year that's also in the black. We did successfully maintain our AAA credit rating from Moody's this year and sold two series of debt, and those came in at less than 2%. So we had a, really a solid year financially. You'll see, there's one item that we're a little late on, and that's the annual user fee model, and the Health Department basically decided to hold off on that until COVID subsides because right now they're still all hands on deck doing contact tracing and all that sort of thing. Moving on to contribute to the long-term economic, social, and environmental health of the county, just wanted to call a couple of things out. One was just the large grants that CMH receives. So Three for Kids, System of Care, Mobile Crisis, and Screening of Incarcerated Youth, and a grant for the jail. So Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program, which will be a big help in the jail. Also, the MPO report was completed and approved by the board on July 28, 2020. We are the only county in Michigan that has three MPOs in the borders. I'm told there might be another that has a portion of two, but even that is very rare. So it was nice to get this updated. I don't think our current group of commissioners most had seen the report. I think we initially did it 10, 12 years ago even. And so, and that was a job well done. Moving on to Goal Three, maintain and enhance communication with citizens, employees, and other stakeholders. Gov delivery, wow, there were so many things that it was great to have in place, you know, whether it was Munetrix, whether it was Qualtrics. You know, Qualtrics has been used to great advantage by the Health Department in managing communication and surveys and the sort during the crisis. And we saw a 21% increase in subscribers during COVID, and the average engagement rate increased by 6.8%. Our social media page likes increased by 35%. We had over 599 posts. And then literally, the COVID information page and statistical dashboard had over a million views to date. So I think Shannon Faulkner, Christina Wyman, Public Health have really done a good job of communicating during COVID. And just in the other areas, you know, we have Jessica in Parks and so many, so many different efforts throughout the county on the part of different offices, agencies, courts, and departments just to communicate. And I think overall, that's going well. We can always improve. I see points where we need to improve, and it's just a continuous thing we need to be concerned about and working on is how we communicate among, to each other, B to U, the county to residents, always something we can improve on. Number Four, so Goal Four, to continually improve the county's organization and services. Just a few items I wanted to call out. Business intelligent tools are being engaged, thanks to Microsoft 365, and providing different areas of the county with the opportunity to create dashboards, measure performance and trends, just all kinds of things we can track to improve our individual and departmental performance in the county. Also, in the training area, especially when the shutdown happened, we did an immense amount of training over Zoom, just an incredible amount. It really helped because we were able to keep people active at home. Maybe, you know, with some of our employees, maybe their jobs entail interaction with customers in person, and they didn't have as much to do at home. And we really did a lot of training, kept people busy that needed to. Others were able to perform their jobs fully from home. It was kind of a range. And so added some resources, developed some new resources, and that all went well. We also, the board created a pooled position, so using some retiree help predominantly to really help decrease turnaround time on new hire background investigations. When the Sheriff's Office does background investigations, it's a very involved, complex process. It's not just calling a few references and giving a thumbs up. They actually physically visit the communities to do in-person interviews, and it can take a month even to do a thorough interview. And this was a huge add in their operation. So I just pulled out a few things. Be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, we, you know, you don't see much yellow in here. We have the one area that we intentionally held off on. Everybody kind of kept their nose to the grindstone, even though we have a crisis or more going on. And so I really appreciate the efforts of everyone throughout the county to keep moving the dial on the strategic plan even during a downtime.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? We'll move on to, is Patrick Sisler on the line?
Sisler, yes.
Sisler? Oh, he is here. Okay. A face with the name.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me here today to share a little bit of some positive work that happened over the last year here in Ottawa County related to a different lens on COVID, which is the Human Services Response in our community, but then also to elaborate a little bit on what Paul started sharing about some of our Census 2020 outreach efforts. So again, Patrick Sisler with Community Spoke. I have the privilege of presenting to several Commissioners on a monthly basis through the Health and Human Services Committee, but it's been a while since I've been in front of the entire board. So just a quick reminder of who Community Spoke is. We are a nonprofit organization that was really founded out of a partnership between county government and the Lakeshore Nonprofit Alliance, which is a nonprofit itself that focuses on supporting and strengthening local nonprofits in Ottawa County. And really, Community Spoke's charge is to help facilitate large-scale collaboration in the area of health and human services, trying to improve our overall system of care here in Ottawa County. And traditionally, that's been a very proactive approach, tackling issues like affordable housing and poverty, food insecurity, mental health, et cetera. But this past year, we had a unique opportunity to serve in kind of an emergency response mode. So I want to take you back a little bit, and I also want to say that I'm sharing on behalf of good work that a lot of people, a lot of organizations were a part of. So I just have the privilege of being able to share it. But I want to take you back to March 13th. So after the schools were announced, they were going to be closed for several weeks. We convened a meeting on that Friday and invited several community leaders to the table, cross-sector leaders, and said, we are going to have a human services crisis on our hands. We know that after any crisis hits a community, and in this case, a public health one, that there's human services elements that follow, whether it's food insecurity, unemployment, housing stability, mental health issues. And we said, what, how can we get out in front of this? How, what are we going to do about this? And so out of that, we really had kind of a two-pronged focus. One was really kind of aimed at the human services element. How do we problem solve in real time these issues we know we're going to experience? And the other was, how do we engage the larger community in the relief efforts? And so on the relief effort side, so what do we accomplish out of this? On the relief effort side, within 24 hours, we had a website up called careodawaucounty.com. And on that site, we focused on three things primarily. First was raising, raising money for the relief effort. How can we get people to donate financially to the community? And so thanks to our two community foundations of Grand Haven and Holland-Zeland, along with the United Way, they pooled their resources, had one fund from which they collected money and donated that out in the early months of COVID. Second, we focused on recruiting volunteers through the local United Way to help in the relief effort. And third, we provided guidance on there for where people could actively get involved, such as donating food or sewing masks and where masks early on when they were in high demand, where they could go. Out of that, then, a couple, couple stats to share. One is, in the first six weeks through the funding effort, we raised just under a million dollars here locally and was able to redistribute that back into the community as quickly as foundations have ever been able to turn around money to really meet the needs. We were also able to secure over 300 volunteers that signed up through the United Way, were credentialed through our Sheriff's Department, and deployed back into the community, delivering things like food and masks to people, to people as well. Some fun things that happened, I think, out of that effort. We had a stay-home fight hunger campaign that ran through the Community Action House, which was already mentioned today in Holland, Michigan, which was, the idea was to engage families in the relief effort by packing boxes, a week's worth of food to deliver to families in need. We expected a couple hundred boxes, maybe, on the high end to be packed. To date, over 15,000 boxes have been given out, 2,500 of which have been packed by families, local families themselves. We also had thousands upon thousands upon thousands of handmade masks sewn through a patchwork network of hand-sewers that we were able to find these masks and distribute them in those early days to the people who needed them most. So a lot of good work on rallying the community. On the human services side, lots of wins as well. And so we met literally daily for weeks with 50 key stakeholders in our community, representing local government, county government, nonprofits, churches. We had super, you know, school superintendents on the calls and others. And we would problem solve real time. And so food insecurity was one of the first things to crop up as people were losing their jobs back in the spring before unemployment and stimulus kicked in. And, and so we had pantries on the call that in real time would say, I need more of X. And another pantry would say, we're able, you know, we're able to provide that. Or I am able to make a Meyer order. Who needs something? And it was this, this amazing collaboration that took place between a lot of our local community-based organizations. One of the, another program that came out of it to develop food or to address food insecurity was helping our local isolated seniors. And so again, early on, high-risk populations, stay indoors, don't go out. And so we were able to create, again, through collaboration, a method where seniors could call a number through Call 211. They would be connected to those volunteers at the United Way, who then would go grocery shopping for them and deliver that food to their house. If they could afford it, they would just reimburse those volunteers when it was delivered. If they couldn't, the volunteers were picking it up from our local pantries. So again, just amazing collaborative work. We worked frequently with our Health Department to help them problem solve issues as it related to quarantining, certain transient population. as it related to quarantining certain transient populations, like the homeless population. We helped keep people in their homes through some of the funding that was raised. And people who couldn't make rent payments, Good Samaritan Ministries should be called out as doing some amazing work to help keep people housed. On the mental health side of things, as we know, mental health issues have grown increasingly severe. Through the funding that was raised, we were able to upgrade several nonprofits' ability to do teletherapy. So to be able to continue to meet the needs of the clients they serve during this critical time. While people were struggling to get in the unemployment system, we worked regularly with our local legislators to help break down some of the barriers and the difficulties of getting through the state system to access to unemployment. And then lastly, we helped keep a lot of our nonprofit doors open by helping nonprofit partners access things like PPP loans and other loans that were coming available. So in summary, I mean, this was an incredibly quick and robust response to human services needs. I think one of the best things that came out of this was a partnership with the Emergency Operations Center here at the county, where we were able to work regularly with the emergency manager, formerly Nick Bonstil, and now Lou Hunt, to add that human services element to what the county was already doing. But, you know, when you ask, how was all of this done? Again, I go back to the word of, it's collaboration. We were called actually quite frequently early on in this process by other communities and asked, how on earth did you get something developed so quickly? And the answer is collaboration. That really just is how we do it here in Ottawa County. Everybody stepped up, everyone knew their lanes, and was willing to share resources, even share staff during this time to make sure we met the needs of the community. So I want to thank the commissioners. We, again, lots of hands, lots of organizations involved in this. We just had the privilege of coordinating much of it. And I want to thank the commissioners because, again, our organization only exists because the county helps to fund us, as well as several county employees serving on our board. So I want to thank you for that. The other thing I'll just touch on then is, in brief, and Paul introduced this, is the Census outreach efforts, which in, you know, normal times would have been a tremendous win for our county to talk about, but it kind of flew under the radar. So Census 2020, we know the census is incredibly important. It provides our representation in Congress, certainly. But perhaps more importantly is the funding that flows through our communities because of accurate census counts, through things like Medicaid and education grants, housing, even down to roads and bridges are tied to accurate census counts. So again, thanks to a partnership with Planning and Performance Department, they received a large grant through the Michigan Municipal League. And the focus of it was really to connect with hard-to-count populations, which would include low-income, homeless, transient populations, people of color, young adults who historically have not completed the census. And one of the things that we have is an incredibly rich partnership with local nonprofits. And so the idea was, by working through us, we could connect with nonprofits who then could connect with these hard-to-count populations. So a couple of things to highlight out of that effort. We promoted the census and provided educational materials to 52 different nonprofit organizations and groups, including 21 of which received mini-grants. And what a lot of them would do is, as a client would come to seek services, which again, during the early days of COVID was a lot. Say you're coming to a local pantry to get food. They would have a staff person or volunteer asking individuals, have you completed the census? If no, do you know where to go to complete it? Do you know how to complete it? And helping debunk some of the myths that were out there about the census. We had several nonprofits actually calling everyone in their Rolodex, every client that they served, as they knew they were home and isolating, and asking them again, have you completed the census? If no, helping them through that. We distributed thousands of bilingual posters and flyers throughout the county to mobile home parks, apartment complexes, food distribution sites. All of our schools put out census information, home with their kids, in kind of backpack programs. And then we, and this is where the Planning and Performance Department was huge. We also had a robust social media campaign. That daily, you were seeing posts from multiple different parties giving honest, truthful messages about the census on a consistent basis. So all in all, our self-response rate in Ottawa County was 79.5%. So that's the rate before census workers are going door-to-door knocking, which was the fourth highest of any county in the state of Michigan. It was also 8% higher than the state of Michigan as a whole. And it was 4% higher than our self-response rate 10 years ago. You say 4%, what does that equate to? Well, it's about 12,000 people in our community. And again, knowing the dollars that flow in, the numbers we use is $1,800 per person for the state of Michigan as a rough number. That's a lot of resources that we're able to recapture in our communities. So again, in short, I want to thank the county and thank partnership with Planning and Performance to be able to do some of that really important work. So that's all I have, and happy to answer any questions if anyone has them.
Anyone have any questions for Patrick? If not, thank you, Patrick. Appreciate your work. Okay. Mr. DeVries, you're up.
Thank you, commissioners. Bob DeVries with GCSI, here to give you your legislative update. So it's kind of been a weird year, as we've all heard, all the reports this year. No different in Lansing. In fact, just driving here today, we found out the House of Representatives ended up shutting down for the whole week because one of their key leadership staffers tested positive for COVID and had worked very closely with about half the Republican caucus. And so they're taking a week off to make sure everybody gets tested and appropriately quarantined, et cetera. But that creates some challenges on schedule because last week was the first week of lame duck. This was supposed to be the second week, and next week was supposed to be the last legislative week of the year. That schedule is now obviously up in the air. If they don't add days, there's going to be a whole bunch of stuff that was supposed to pass out of the House this week that just isn't going to get done this year. And that's maybe not a big deal. There's a lot of things that aren't super time-sensitive, but there are some that are. And so it wouldn't shock me to see some session days added, maybe the week of Christmas, or potentially the week in between Christmas and New Year to try to finish some of these things up. The other big news this week, obviously, was the announcement with the governor that the COVID pause, as she's calling it, will extend for 12 more days through the 20th. Really no changes in how that's supposed to operate. It just kind of maintains the status quo as is. The one thing that is still a little bit unclear is what she's looking for on the 20th, whether she'll extend it or not at that point in time. The legislature's been trying to ask for some specific metrics, like when certain numbers get hit, when will you, you know, allow restaurants to open back up, people to go back to their offices, et cetera? And it seems to be more of analyze it as it is each time type of scenario, rather than wait for certain specific metrics to hit. Since I was here last, we also had an election. And the political kind of makeup in Lansing has stayed the same. Republicans in the State House had held a 58 to 52 majority. They maintained that majority despite a little bit of a change-up. They lost, Republicans lost two seats that had been traditionally Republican seats, one in the Novi area in Oakland County and one in Kalamazoo County. But they were able to pick up seats, one in northern Genesee County and one in Bay County that had been traditionally Democratic seats. So this is the last election cycle using the maps that we've had for about a decade. And next time we have an election in two years, we'll be using new districts that are drawn by the independent redistricting commission. So it'll be an interesting thing to watch over the next nine or 10 months as those new lines get drawn by this new commission that hasn't ever existed before. So there are some new leadership elected. The House Speaker was termed out, and the new Speaker will be Jason Wentworth, State Representative from Clare County. Our, one of our local representatives, Jim Lilly, was appointed to lead a new committee. We don't quite know what it means yet. It's called the Rules Committee. And what its purview is, is still a little bit of a mystery. But it was announced as one of the more important things. And so that's a good thing for Ottawa County when our representatives make it into important spots. If lame duck continues as we expect it to, kind of the other big thing that we're going to be watching is the budget supplemental. The governor has asked for a $400 million budget supplemental. Some of that money is paid for with remaining CARESAC dollars. There's not a whole lot left, but what is left needs to be spent, or at least appropriated by the end of the year. The rest of it will be paid for by budget lapses. Medicaid caseload was down, for example, and so there was about $200 million extra there. And then most state departments simply underspent their appropriation, as they typically do by, you know, a percentage point or so. And so it leaves about $400 million on the table. And the bulk of that is supposed to be, according to the governor's proposal, at least, supposed to be dedicated to its COVID-related funding. Of note for the county, the governor's requesting $41 million for contact tracing and testing in public facilities. And she specifically mentioned facilities like county jails, for example, and universities, things like that. So that could be a benefit to Ottawa County and some of the institutions located here in Ottawa County. Also, there's supposed to be $100 million with the stimulus in the package. 50 million of it, she describes as going to the needy families, although it's unclear exactly what form that would be. And $50 million worth of small business relief grants, sounds like primarily to restaurants. But there is $400 million total. I guess the one other number that was publicly announced this week was $72 million worth of funding for vaccine distribution. Two other legislative packages that are kind of of note at the moment. A vote was taken last week in the House, and actually did not receive enough votes to pass on a bill that would change how public notices work in Michigan. This is a bill that's been worked on in one form or another for about a decade. Former Representative Amanda Price kind of kicked it all off when she was a legislator, but it would change the requirement for local governments to publish public notices in newspapers and instead let them use, you know, GovDelivery like Ottawa County does already, or post things on websites, et cetera. It's being pitched as a way to save money because local government spends quite a bit of money on paying newspapers to publish these notices and also to increase access because fewer and fewer people subscribe to newspapers. But not surprisingly, it's opposed pretty significantly by the newspaper groups. So it was up on the board for quite a while in the House. I think it was about 51 votes when they cleared it. They needed to get to 56 and couldn't quite make it there. It's not going to come back up this year, but it sounds like it's going to be on the agenda for the early part of next year to try again. So that's something that we'll try to be engaged in to make sure that Ottawa County is represented and has a voice at the table there. The other piece of legislation of note right now is, as you recall, there are some changes made to the Open Meetings Act that specifically allowed for public bodies like the County Commission to meet via Zoom or any other sort of virtual technology. There's a bill that I expect to pass before the end of the year that would extend that now through the first quarter of next year. And then for a year beyond that, as long as the local government has declared a state of emergency. I would expect that that will be extended again even next year if the need arises. But it's pretty clear that the legislature thinks it's important to meet in person when possible. And so they're going to extend it for three months at a time at this point in time. That's my update, but I would love to answer questions if anybody has any.
Anybody questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Doug?
Yeah, on the Medicaid caseloads is, I mean, it's in a sense kind of counterintuitive. But is that just because less people are utilizing medical services during COVID or no?
I don't have a lot of details, honestly, Commissioner. I was at a briefing with Budget Director Culp this morning when he was talking about
Yeah, I was on that same one, yeah.
How they were going to get the money. And he just mentioned reduced Medicaid caseloads in a very offhanded way. And so I'm not quite sure what the why is there, other than they spent significantly smaller amount of money than normal. I will say that that's not unusual. It's such a large amount of money that underspending by $200 million is just as easy as overspending by $200 million. And both of those things happen on a pretty regular basis. So I wouldn't probably read too far into it, but I'm happy to ask a follow-up question and see if I can get you some information.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
Thank you.
All right, report of county administrator.
Yes. It's a few items today. Work is continuing on the new Juvenile Justice Center. I think meetings with stakeholders will be set up. It looks like those are going to start soon and may go into next year. And I think, okay, we're also getting closer and we're ready for second-round interviews for the new Facilities Director. The SEPTED team, that's Crime Prevention through Environmental Design. I think John will be proud of me for knowing that acronym because usually he's the acronym member of our team. But we had a meeting today and we're, again, a lot has been accomplished with building security behind the scenes through the SEPTED team as we do our best to make our facilities as safe for employees and visitors as possible. I just wanted to, I think Patrick Sisler has left. But as I've had interaction with some of my colleagues, even nationwide, people know what Patrick and the team in Ottawa County has done with human services during COVID. And I think it's simply amazing how everybody came together and accomplished everything that they have. So I guess I'm going to have to send him a note and thank him. Also, the COVID-19 team continues to meet every week. And very shortly, you should see V 7.0, as we call it, the seventh version of the plan. The COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan should be out maybe even later this week. And I think that is it for today. Oh, the other thing is, the DEI Strategic Plan will be done by the end of the year. We're planning to report out to the board in January. Session.
Okay, so a couple of us, I've got this, and I need to stretch here. Passing this out. Commissioners that are on Zoom, you should have gotten this from Regina as an email recently. This is our action request, and then also the Administrator's Performance Evaluation. Kind of, it's an evaluation of the evaluation itself. And so Greg and I and Matt met with Al earlier today and went over his evaluation and some of the points that some of you all have made. And as you can see from the performance evaluation, he has far exceeded his position requirements. And many of us have expressed our appreciation for the work that he's done. And I want to just echo that, Al, publicly, that we're very thankful for who you are and what you do and proud to work alongside of you as well.
Very much.
Anyone else want to make any comments? Or otherwise, we have an action request that I think Mr. Fenske is going to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to state my sincere appreciation for your exemplary work during this time of COVID. There were some other things that took place at the early part of calendar year 2020 that were pretty unique in themselves. And you certainly probably have reached this time where this might have even gone above and beyond the Great Recession of 2008, 2009, as far as challenges in gathering together all your department heads and putting together a plan to assure that we're safe and we're moving forward and such. So a lot of this performance evaluation is based in real time, and it continues to be based on your decisions and your leadership these past months. So it is with great pleasure to make the motion to accept the County Administrator's Annual Performance Review Committee Report on the 2020 Performance Evaluation of the County Administrator's Al Vanenburg, including the 3% one-time pay for performance per the County Administrator's Employment Agreement, also the implementation of the wage-study salary recommendations on the same schedule as all the other employees are receiving presently, and renewal of the County Administrator's Employment Agreement for the period of January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2024. That is something that typically the County Board has provided for the County Administrator in advance of those years. So that is, that last one there is not something new. That is something that's always been taking place. So that's my motion.
Second. Second, second. Been moved and seconded. Comments, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the second, the second portion of that implementation of wage study salary recommendations on the same schedule, that was what we had talked about maybe in July or August. Is that correct?
In July or August?
Oh, when we talked, when we were talking about implementation of the wage study?
Yeah.
Yes. So for the, yes, that my position would be part of that in that when the wage study is done, probably in late March, late March to late April, that that would be implemented with the rest, all the rest of the employees.
Okay, yeah, because it's not, it's not here. So I'm just going by memory and that's what was part of that initial study back in, over the summertime.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Zalstra.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Holtbauer.
Yes, definitely.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Terpstra.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for your support. And it is an honor and pleasure to serve this Board as county administrator. I complete my 17th year on December 29. Honestly, never thought I would be here this long, even though I'm originally from Grand Haven. But really, when it comes down to it, it's the teams, it's the people, it's how we all collaborate together. It's, you know, everybody's in this together and everybody's pulling together. You know, Commissioner Fenske made the comment about, about COVID and related to the Great Recession. And, you know, the Great Recession played out over a number of years. So the pain was distributed more over time where this one, it seems like everything has happened in such a concentrated timeline that it has been a lot different. But quite honestly, with the team of people we have here and the experience we have here, it has made it more than tolerable. We've been able to work through it all together and that is in no little part the support of this Board of Commissioners. So thank you very much.
Okay, next thing is general information, comments, and meetings attended. Anybody?
Mr. Chair. I just want to make a comment if I could, with the vaccine coming very, very close. Our, our police, our fire, our frontline workers, many are going to be required and asked to get this vaccine as leaders of county government. Those of us that are in agreement or that are also of the same opinion that we should get the vaccine, I think it would be important to involve the elected officials and the leaders of government to put forth maybe a letter to all staff encouraging the vaccine, encouraging the people of Ottawa County to get it. You know, Darrell and Lisa said earlier on that we need to get to 70% to kick this vaccine, okay, to get the herd immunity. You know, our people, the people of Ottawa County look to us for, for, for leadership. They look to us. And I think it's important, if you're willing to take the vaccine, that you tell people, I for one will get the vaccine as soon as, as soon as possible, as soon as it's offered. But if we can maybe put a letter together and that, you know, not mandatory, but those that are willing to sign their names to it and get that out to everybody, I think that would be important. So it's just a thought I had. So thank you very much.
I think that might be a good suggestion and maybe that's something that for our next meeting that you could have something like that that we could adopt.
We can drive something, sure.
Okay, that's all good?
10-4.
We should be able to get a few emails after we do that, so. Anyone else?
I got a little report. We, we had our MAC board meeting Friday morning. We had Matt Chaser from NAOC, the administrator for NAOC. And he just talked about what was going on in, in Washington DC in Congress. And NAOC has really been pushing. They had, on the first part of the package for the bills that came out, it was like only 30% of the, of the government entities that, only 30% went to counties. So we've been pushing that. We've been trying to switch it to 50/50. So hopefully when the, when the money comes out, that the counties will get at least 50% of it and not just 30%. So that was high on, high of what we talked about. So, okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make a comment. You know, I want to commend in our county clerk, Justin Rollback. He, he's taken the opportunity to try to correct some misunderstandings regarding the November 30 election. You know, it's so much easier to remain silent and be safe. So I applaud his efforts at trying to correct all of the information that's been out there. It's a divisive time, a divisive time. And I appreciate all his efforts. You know, I've got the utmost trust in Justin and all the county clerks for the township and other clerks in our county, along with his staff. So I commend his efforts.
Thanks, Frank. Anyone else? I just have a couple of comments. First of all, Robin and I have been doing this hows and whys of the DEI for the MAC, new commissioner education through MSU extension. We've done that four times now. And it's been an interesting experience, sitting in four times on also the tail end of a couple of the sessions. One of them has to do with commissions, the board's responsibility, what's the responsibility of the chair, what's the responsibility of the audience. So I've listened to that several times. And then also I've listened to the, the questions that have come from some other participants. And one of them often is talked about is the use of cell phones and tablets and things like that during council or commission meetings. And a MAC's attorney, his advice is that it is not permissible to use personal devices during a meeting because the perception from the public could be misconstrued and misunderstood, no matter if you are doing it for personal use or for, certainly if you're texting between commissioner, that's, that's forbidden. You know, that's not, not allowed. But beyond that, you know, if you're texting anybody or if you're emailing anybody during a commission meeting, you should not be doing that. That is according to the attorney for MAC. So I just want to also say thanks to the commissioners today that are on Zoom. I appreciate the fact that you all have taken it upon yourself to keep us as well as staff safe. So thank you for that. And with that, I'll open it up to public comment. Anyone in attendance? Oh, we do. Somebody from the public? Start the clock.
Don't worry, we know what kind, we know what kind of cars.
Three minutes.
Know what kind of cars you drive. Some of you had asked about annual event that we do every year with the shop with the sheriff. And there was a lot of concern that it was not going to happen this year. But I really have to say with good news, Shop with the Sheriff is going to take place. It's going to have a much different look to it this year. And the whole process, we're working with how we're going to deliver this. We've been working closely with the schools to select the families as we have done in the past. The community support has been overwhelming. And I really got to throw a kudos out to several corporations, two in particular here in Ottawa County. The Grand Haven Walmart has put in $2,500. The Grand Haven Meyer has put in $7,500. The Genesee and Meyer has put in $5,000. And the Jamestown Meyer has put in another $5,000. So again, to the Walmart Corporation, to the Meyer family and to the Meyer Corporation, a huge thank you that we're going to be able to do this this year. And I know in the past, some of you have attended that event and participated in it. We're going to have to take a rain check from you until hopefully next year. But we are working with the schools and a delivery system that's, you know, following compliance with COVID rules and regulations to still enlighten many families yet this Christmas season. So again, I just wanted to let you know that it's going to continue. I know each year, some of you look forward to that little video clip that comes out that will probably still come out. We're going to put a collage together and some information on that video and we'll still produce that with the help of Shannon. So again, I just wanted to publicly thank the Walmart Corporation and the Meyer family and Meyer Corporation for their donations to again, make this a successful shop with the sheriff this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? No?
No, sir.
All right, then I'll adjourn this meeting. I won't even ask you if you want to adjourn. I'm just adjourning it.
Yeah, gentlemen.
Oh.
Bye bye.